Yeah, no.
Thank you.
I just want the little button.
Who's the guy in the background with all the lion stuff on? I'll bet he didn't sleep much last night.
Are you still getting no audio from us?
No, I got you now.
Oh, okay. Unless you want me to sit here this close the whole time, Bruce.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Alrighty, I'll rise for pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Hey, welcome everybody. I'll look for more to improve the agenda, but I think we have an addition.
Yeah, to approve the purchase of election partner.
Okay, we'll put that out for meeting the power. Okay, with that addition, is there any others?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, first and second, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Where is, for the minutes from December twenty, no, twenty-third. Everything what about our second?
It should be.
January second. Our seconds here too, that should be second, actually the second, January second instead of the twenty-third.
I think so, so. Oh, on here, on the agenda, I'm like, okay, I'm like, wait a minute, I'm like, it says January second on here, I think I missed that.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. I went over them.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And you're gonna make that, then you change that.
General public concerns. There also, okay, we'll move on, Ben.
We'll do that when it comes out.
Morning.
Good morning.
Two items for you guys for the agenda today. First is to approve an application to work in the counties right away for Corn Belt Power. They are planning on replacing, well, you see the map on the back, they're replacing holes from Martin Marietta Quarry all the way north into Cassuth County. They're outside of the right of way for the most part with exception of maybe about a two mile stretch on the whole thing where they run with the roadway. And they're running on the same alignment, so they're just.
Changing poles.
Changing poles.
Are these the ones they're putting in steel poles?
Yes.
Everything's in order, Ben?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, second. Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any more discussion? The United all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. This next item, Ben.
The next one's not even really me.
No, so I think we're gonna move that down when we're in drainage with power.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Made it easier.
Alrighty, we'll move on. Listen.
So we have myself, Cole, Brittany, Dicky, Mary Jo, Lila from Hawaii, Cindy in from Illinois. You just wanna give a little bit of history so you folks can understand Mid Iowa Road partnership is a region. So years and years and years ago, the state divided us kinda like the Togs, kinda like what you spearhead and help districts into economic development regions. Every county has to be part of a region, and that's how we communicate with the state on economic development items. And so we've been in existence since nine, I think. We've had a really strong active region, I would say one of the strongest regions in the state. Unfortunately, as part of our membership, each county gets two voting seats on the Mid Iowa Road Board of Directors. One of those voting seats in two thousand-ish ten was occupied by Lori Bennett, now Lori Rickles. Lori Rickles, now Lori Bennett. We were awarded judgment in the amount of ninety-four thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-six cents, which is after insurance paid us fifty thousand. So the total amount of investment is much higher than that. Be kind of happy if you. And so the judgment was for sixty-two dollars and fifty cents to pay weekly. You'll see that beginning October of two thousand and eleven. You can see from the history, payments are sporadic at best in two thousand. So clearly, if it's weekly, there should be fifty-two payments a year. In twenty twenty-four, she's behind fifty-two payments. In twenty-three, she's behind forty-eight payments. In twenty-two sixteen, total number of payments behind two hundred nineteen point eight payments behind for a total of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars that she is behind. Of the ninety-four thousand, we were awarded, we should have been paid forty-three thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, and we've been paid twenty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. We have tried everything. We hired, tried to hire, using Corvone Powers attorney powers to hire a private attorney. Essentially, they told us that there wasn't enough assets to collect privately, and thus they weren't in certain case right then, we get paid based on what they can collect. And so they encouraged us again to go through our local county attorney. She is a convicted felon. It is four quarter restitution, there is an obligation to follow up on this, and we just can't get it either. So we're sexually, we're asking for your support. We've, several of us have reached out to the county attorney with nothing. It's very frustrating, I mean, if she's not gonna be held accountable, she's not gonna pay, and she could be going back to jail for not making payment.
And which she should.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, and what steps have you, I mean, as far as what steps have you tried to take? Let me put it that way, so that we can kind of get a history and so that can get out.
We found her, first of all. We did ourselves, we're getting nowhere. So we made calls upon calls, found an address, forwarded it, we even found a private investigator that was willing to go serve her because the county attorney said we couldn't find her to serve her. And he won't return phone calls or emails to that private investigator, so we blocked that, he changed jobs, so now we're not serving, he can't act.
Where's she at now?
What happened?
Where is she located at?
Missouri.
And I do believe she had been back in the state multiple times, and you made the county attorney aware that she was in the state and did nothing.
Yes, and in one particular case, came back to the state, she made a payment before she came back, so that was good enough. So, but when you not making, you're not even trying, you're not even paying the fee.
Right.
Where's she, where's she work at? I mean, is her job good, I mean, can she afford the payments?
So she declared bankruptcy in May, on twenty-four, but the bankruptcy claim, and John's the one that gave it to us, so we know that he knows specifically states that this restitution is not exempt. So she must still make those payments regardless of any bankruptcy. I mean, I can't attest to her financial capability, I can just say factually, the restitution is still an obligation.
And if she's not paying the restitution, does that mean then she is liable to go to jail?
So we asked John to file contempt of court charges, is exactly what that is. She has to be served that she's in contempt of court, which is how it came up. She can't be there, find her, so then we gave him an address, so then he sent, I think it's Benton is the county, their sheriff's department out, they did. They were not able to serve her at the residence that he sent to them, found another address. And so we were gonna send our own, pay for our own individual to go out there to serve her. But we've gotta get the paperwork from John and get this done properly, serve her.
Gotcha, so you're waiting for the county attorney to get the paperwork correct for your investigator?
I don't know what the time period looks like, but I feel like probably expired.
Probably have to have new paperwork.
What that?
Probably have to have new.
Something, I mean, it's been seven months since then, so.
So I guess my interest in this is really twofold, I'm a member of, sorry, of MIGP, like Alyssa said, but I mean, Lori was in my position when she stole a ton of money from the MIGP and from the city of Humble. So I think I have invested interest in this, and as she said, we made it pretty much every attempt we can, and it's gone on for a really long time. I got involved of August of twenty-three is when Alyssa and I first met with John to say, hey, she's behind on payments, can we get a content order? That order didn't come out until April of twenty-four, which we're thankful for, but since that point, I've reached out, I think, six or seven times, gotten no response either on a call or an email. We kind of lucked into someone I was willing to serve her, so it's a former city manager who I ran into at a conference, he's like, yeah, I'm a certified law enforcement officer, I'm in Missouri all the time, I'll go serve her. I just need to get ahold of the county attorney, and he's made several attempts and got no return calls either, and that went on for basically since the summer of this year, and then still no response. The unfortunate thing is, he's a city manager again, he took a job, I think, at the end of the year, so I don't know if he's still available to do this, I think he'd be willing to help, but we, we're worried we lost our window to get something done. And it's gone on for, you know, year and a half, almost two years now, so.
And I think the other important thing, which is why you see the other folks on, is all of us are funded the same way. So there are public dollars that we clearly wrestled that are not being repaid, and I think certainly they have accountability just as though I do back to you folks to say, hey, I'm sorry, can't collect this. And it's our funding, so I don't know what this means for you folks, but to me, this is egregious, and we need to do something. We can't just let it go and say, well, shucks, she doesn't wanna pay, so I guess, I mean, our only avenue is through the county attorney and through the criminal side. We've tried, we're gonna pay our own attorney, I mean, there's, I wonder, we reached out to our attorney and he said, from the criminal side of it. Yeah, attorney, yeah, if it's.
This is Sadiem, I just wanna add as well, along with Alyssa and Cole and Brittany, we're kinda at our wits' end to what we can do on our part, and if we, if the board could help push the county attorney to be able to help us in some way, shape, or form to be able to get something from her. I mean, just not paying isn't good enough, and just like all of us, we're all accountable to our boards, and even in our day lives, if we don't pay our bills, there's consequences, so.
I have talked to John on this once or twice. To. Yeah.
Oh, I would, I mean, we try to, yeah, all Sandy's saying you gotta do something, we're gonna do something out.
Yeah.
I mean, we.
But I have. Do we need to have a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can have a meet, we can do a work session or something like that, and ask him to come. The problem is, and I'm just gonna say it out this way, 'cause we keep, we get told this all the time, he's an elected official. We.
We can't tell him what to do.
Right. And that's the, we can ask him, we can, like that, I have talked, I know it's once or twice I've talked to him, 'cause I, you'd mentioned that, so then I mentioned something to him, and we can't come right out and say, you have to do this, because he's a, it's the elected people that are his. Boss, basically, and the only way is, is in the election.
So what would you recommend we do? Do we need to notify the elected people that?
Yes.
Restitution isn't in favor.
Yeah. Letter to the editor, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but I mean, we got, you gotta get it out to the people, and then the people can start calling up, hey, 'cause I mean, basically, if the money is from the people.
You work for me, do your job.
Right. I mean, I.
It sounds like a lot of work, yes.
And I, I mean, to be completely transparent, he and I aren't gonna leave that, we're in Humble County.
I know.
Yeah.
No, I know.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
I know, and that's me even saying this, but that's what you gotta.
That's what I found it so ridiculous, in the government, in the board house.
Yeah.
We sit here, the county supervisor says, we don't have a lot of authority over a lot.
No authority we have is. No authority we have is budget.
But if he's gonna ask for like a meeting, I think that would be a certain point.
We can ask for, I mean, that's not probably, I'm asking for a meeting.
I think it should be a public meeting.
Yep.
And nobody's saying this is easy. I mean, it's difficult. I, I used to work in a criminal justice background when I came out of college for probation. And it is super difficult to track down people out of state. But I think the most frustrating thing for us is the lack of response. So a meeting would be a step in the right direction and just to get some answers and to try to hold, you know, Lori accountable.
And it should be, we're all taxpayers.
Process, and this was resolved, it shouldn't follow up on.
Yeah.
As long as he's willing to make, take action in the board, if we don't get response back from that, then, I mean, there's no fault of John's for doing this. We just need a response, we need them to do what is asked, so we can try to get our money.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and that's only. Right.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda for next week. If he can't come to the Monday meeting, we'll have a special meeting point.
Yep, you can do that.
Trish, would you notify us of when that meeting is scheduled, please?
You'll attend. You'll be here.
Yeah, just the, the same folks.
All right.
Thank you all for your help.
I'm having enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna jump down to the item we put on the agenda, which is purchase of voting equipment.
Right.
I'll let you take care of this, Trish.
So just with anything computer-wise, it's, that is light the game. They won't do updates on the equipment anymore. Program-wise, so they're forced to get new equipment from Adkins Selection Service, and that's who we've used for a very long time. The overall price for the equipment, which is eight computers, eight ballot boxes and scanners. What else? A tablet and another ballot scanner is sixty-eight thousand, five eighty. And that does not include our annual software maintenance fees of seven thousand, three hundred and thirty that we already paid. Seven thousand, three hundred and thirty.
What was that, seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four?
That's our annual maintenance fees, a climate check, um, machine yearly.
And this is something we're being forced into?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get a lot of unfunded mandates.
Is there any, any, I'm just throwing this out there, is there anybody else to go through or not? I'm just throwing that out.
There is, but the Adkins has a good reputation. We've always had good service from them. They'll come directly here to work on the equipment, if there's a problem, and to update it.
And where are the other?
Sorry, they have representatives around them.
Trish, when was the last time we updated our equipment?
Every election before it.
So this is a six, sixty-eight thousand dollar yearly expense, almost?
I believe every four years.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
And I just, yeah, there's no other way to explain it except for kind of, you know, we're forced to. Other counties, we're one of the last ones that have not updated. Just because it's familiar with our precinct election workers. They've got a good handle on the equipment and we hate to switch, and I definitely didn't wanna do it during the general election this year.
Makes sense.
Our options are kind of limited.
Yeah. There are other companies, I mean, a couple others, but this is by far and wide the one that everybody uses the most, I think.
So the.
Yeah, we used our fund money.
That's what I was gonna ask, this was the ARPA money. So it didn't come out of general, the general fund, it came out of the ARPA. ARPA, I feel like an ARPA. Hey, I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of the election equipment for sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, using the ARPA funds.
Okay, real first and a second, any more discussion?
We have to put that seven thousand dollars on that price for the fee?
No, that's, that's in my budget.
All right. Just checking.
Budget that every year.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the voting question. All right, we still got a couple minutes before nine o'clock. Now we have amended employee mileage allowance and meal reimbursement. This is something we talked about last week.
Right, when I was going over and, I don't know, we had the thing out, but what we approved last year and was seventy-five dollars, like, I don't know how I missed that when we were looking at the, it wasn't seventy, it was seventy-five. So we need to amend it to what we approved this year. And we approved it going from seventy to seventy-five per day, including tip.
And then the mileage is still gonna be five cents.
It'll be, yep, the five cents, yep, below federal.
And what was that?
They're at.
Sixty-seven, did you say?
No, they're seventy.
Seventy, seventy, sixty-seven last year. Sixty-five, yep, okay.
Okay, so what we're amending is the seventy dollars meals to seventy-five and reaffirming the five cent below feds at sixty-five cents a mile.
Correct. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, approved for filing and publication for twenty twenty-four salary report for Iowa Code Section three point nine point one eight.
Now, is this for twenty-four, twenty-five? Because last, the one we had last year was twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes.
So this should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion on the salary report? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Here we have it, accepted, placed, and filed, all the quarters, quarterly report ending December thirty-first, but fifty-four.
For, I don't know if it's the end of the year. Total money that I had brought in was seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents. And out of that, the county received a twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and two cents.
I don't have it.
Oh, I, I just have the one copy. You wanna look at it?
We have a lot of little pots of money that go to the different various.
Explain, maybe explain how you do that with the two.
Are we gonna have a work session about our offices in Tennessee after today? Yes. Next week.
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Okay.
Well, I kind of went into more details thinking I was gonna, we were gonna have that today too, but we have, obviously, these are our biggest incomes, our county. We also deal with Iowa Department of Public Health, we also collect taxes on the sale of properties. We also do DNR stuff, a lot of those are, most of that money goes to the state. What, what we can make for the county is basically five dollars per page of a recording document and transfer tax.
Sure.
On sale property. The report breaks down where everything goes, and, and you can see that it's, the first two pages are all total dollars. So that's the money that we collect in the different departments. The last little page is the one that has the, the twenty-one thousand shows what that quarter brought for income for our county. Like, I'm gonna review it really fast. You know, I'll talk more when we get together next time, but there's a fee modernization gonna be presented to the legislative system this coming session. Hopefully, it passes as presented. If so, our five dollar fee will jump up to ten dollars per page. Our records management, that is a fund I can use for equipment or for anything to preserve the records, will jump from one dollar document, two dollars document, or kind of decide about that. Yeah.
And it hasn't been increased since, what was it, eighty-five?
Can you bring copies of this next week, correct?
I can, I didn't know that it wasn't, but I will, I mean, I only report this quarter.
Okay.
Four times a year, but I can certainly make copies for everybody, no problem. Yeah, and ask me your questions or come on down and visit my office.
I will.
Well, I'll make the motion to accept and place on file Recorders Quarterly Report Ending December thirty-one point twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, I think we're good to drainage, Trish Collins here.
I'll make that motion to move into drainage.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We are in drainage.
Okay, I need more work through soon. Or wait, somebody here, oh, you put that over there, okay.
Have we opened the hearing?
Yeah. No, we have not, we just wanted to drainage, so.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to open the, to the hearing for Drainage DD eighty branch D improvement.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are opening up the hearing at nine o'clock. And I'll let you take it from here.
All right, morning, everybody. Yeah, I think, especially since there's a couple new board members, and this really is kind of the last formal hearing for this project, I kind of just start with maybe a recap of what we were doing. Just kind of some high points of the project. So in August of twenty twenty-three, a petition for improvements was filed by the Dakota City Council. So Dakota City is a landowner in Drainage District eighty. And a petition was filed for improvements and basically ended at the block away. So it's, there was a prior improvement in Drainage District eighty, I mean, in Dakota City and Humboldt in approximately two thousand and nine, where they put in a bunch of bigger pipes. And this particular one, basically, they didn't, they, they ran a thirty inch and then they stopped it, and there was a manhole, and then from that point on, there was, it went back to the, it was the original tile, so it was twelve and ten inch tile, went through the, the elementary school property to the south, and then kind of ended in Main Street, basically, the intersection of Main Street and Fourth Street South. And that area had been seeing some drainage problems, flooding and, and what have you, and so that was, that was the petition was for improvements for that stretch, which really was only six hundred and thirty feet. And so we had some discussions about that. You know, it'd been nice if that was done fifteen years ago. But it wasn't, and so here we are. And basically, we replaced that twelve and ten inch tile with thirty, we extended the thirty inch for a little bit further. And then we dropped it to a twenty-four, and then went all the way, basically, close to the south side of Main Street. And went through the school property, went through the ball field, but there was a lot of removing fences, putting stuff back. Removed a swing set that, they were gonna, they were planning on getting rid of anyways and replacing. So that, that maybe kind of worked out okay. As part of the project, we removed that and disposed of it. And then the school put in a new, a new swing set in approximately the same location. When, when I first was looking at the project, I estimated that it was gonna be a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar project. We, we did a pre-class, which basically is a preliminary version of what we're talking about today. And so I looked at, all right, what in a drainage district, you do an improvement project and you're essentially required to do a reclassification. And I think the idea behind that is, is when you spend large amounts of money, you wanna make sure that how the, how the bills are sent out to the landowners are, are fair. And you don't just use something that was used in the past that really isn't applicable to the, to the current project. So we did a preliminary version of that, so this is the formal version, what we're looking at today in the report that I handed out. To give landowners an, an idea of what they might end up paying for on the project. We had a hearing. The project was approved, and then we put it out for bids. Doyle Construction did the tile work, and then Blacktop Service did the road restoration work, so there was, we had to tear up some roads. And Blacktop Service did that portion of the work. The final construction cost ended up being a little bit under a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And when it's all said and done here, I'm estimating that the final project cost will be two, two hundred and five thousand. So I had, again, way early on, my initial estimate was two hundred and seventy thousand, and I'm glad to say, you know, at the end, it's, it's gonna be significantly less, about seventy-five percent of what I originally estimated.
That surprises me.
Doesn't happen.
Well, and I don't advertise this early on, but I, I mean, I typically like to be a little bit on the higher side of things when we're deciding on whether to do a project. Because if, if I'm, if I'm sitting in the landowner's shoes, you know, okay, if it's a little bit. Okay, if it's a little bit higher and I say, okay, let's do that project and it comes back in lower, great, but if.
Probably taking time.
Tell me. You, you tell me it's going to be this amount and it's. Twenty, thirty, forty percent more, the land, the land, if I was the lander, I might say, well, I don't know if I would have done, if I would have agreed to it, if.
Right.
So you do worst case scenario?
Well. Kind of. I try to err on the higher side, uh, but that, it doesn't, you don't always know how it's going to play out, it is an estimate. So any, anyways, I'm glad that it's seventy-five percent of what uh, originally estimated, so that means um. You know, everybody has to pay less. So when, again, when we do an improvement, we have to do a reclassification and that involves an engineer and then two disinterested landowners. So basically, they have to own land in Humboldt County, but they can't own or have any interest in the land that we're talking about, so. There's, in this report. Well, that's. Now, towards the back, there's some maps. You can see the area that we're talking about, so basically, within that pink. Boundary, the, the commissioners can't have any. They can't own any land in there or have any interest in it, um, you know, in farm, in farmland stuff, it'd be like, well, you can't be renting any land in there. Any reason that you would maybe be biased. Um. So that's, that's the basics of it, and. A long time ago, when they did reclassifications before computers and that sort of thing, the engineer and the two, two other commissioners would go out, look at it and. Then. A lot of times, it'd be pretty time consuming that they would do that, now we have computers and so it's a little bit of a different process where. As the engineer, I put together kind of a computer-generated estimate and then I. Have it basically in draft form and then meet with the commissioners, we look at the numbers and, and talk about the project. And. Basically try to figure out what's the most fair way of doing it, and if there's any changes from what. I had started with, then I go back and make those changes and until basically we're all in agreement. And we sign off, you know, that we, in our best judgment, that this is fair and equitable. Um, and just a little bit more on reclassification, it's required to be based on benefit. So how, like, how do we, how do we decide who pays what? And. You know, there's, there's a lot of different methods, different engineering firms kind of do different things, but um.
So in this. Colorant area right here.
Yes.
This will, this drainage will benefit everybody that's in this area.
Yes. And benefit. One caveat to that is benefit is a little bit of an ambiguous term, because. A common question I get is. You know, that's not going to, and maybe it doesn't apply so much in this case, but. Um, like in agricultural lands, let's say, we put a tile in and somebody's still quite a ways away. And they'll say, well, I'm so far away and the tile didn't get improved up to me, it's really not going to help my drainage much. And um, or I don't have much tile in my property, and so.
Say, I don't need it.
Or they say, yeah.
Or I don't want it, so I'm in CRP or something, can't tile my, my land anyway.
Right, so benefit isn't, isn't necessarily actual, like, as soon as you put it in. It doesn't have to be actual drainage improvements, like, the day you put it in. It, it can involve, well, we brought a better outlet closer, closer to your lands that you have access to. That you can tile into, whether you do or not privately is up to, and in this case, it's a little bit different, but I guess. The thing I'm trying to convey is it, it, it isn't necessarily translate to direct, immediate. Drainage benefit always.
Right.
Um. So the, the factors that we kind of look at, and it's on a parcel-by-parcel basis, because that's how you, you send the bills out, is. The each lot or parcel that's part, that, that's benefited, and so different parcels have different. Lot, they're different sizes, so one obvious thing is how much area is in that. Lot or parcel, if it's a little bitty one. Versus a large parcel, obviously, it's more benefit to the, to the larger land area, just on that factor. So we look at, and before I go into other factors, we, we look at a combination of several factors. And some of them might be, okay, that's their high benefit on this side, but their low benefit on this side, and so what's the combination? At the end, and to determine their overall benefit. Uh, so we looked at land area, we look at distance from the facility, so we put in this new pipe. The further you are away from it, um, the less benefit that you would have from it. Uh, the use of the facility, so this, and a project like this, it doesn't necessarily paint. It's easy of a picture to understand it, so I, I switch it to something, it's like a mile-long tile or a ditch. If you've got land that drains into that at the very bottom end of that, you didn't use any of that tile or ditch above you. Um. The people at the top end that have land that drain into the very top.
They're going to benefit more.
And they use the entire length of that, they needed that entire length, they're going to need, they need to pay more. Because they needed that entire length of tile or ditch put in, um, to be able to drain their land, so that's essentially what that's, that's getting at. Uh, and then generation of runoff, so we looked at the lots and basically. What's sitting on them, is it a grass lot? Is it, is it just a concrete? Is it, is it just concrete the whole way? And. Basically, if you get rain and the more impervious the surface in, in the lot, the more runoff that's going to generate, the more pressure it's going to put on the system. The more need for this system there is to prevent flooding and, and the greater benefit that would be received. And then one final factor that we considered was the, what I call it a ponding factor, so in the. In basically, the only two places that we applied this factor to were the, the ball field area, which is. Owned by the school and then in some places for the city streets. Where there's, you know, ponding of water issues, and so essentially it was to. Identify that those are higher benefit areas. Um, so it's just kind of taking that into consideration. So, um, after we looked at all those factors for all the, the parcels and lots. Um, basically, that you come up with benefit units and then you can, you can apply any, any levy amount. That you want towards that and be able to figure out who's going to be what. And so, like I was saying, I'm estimating a final project cost of two hundred and five thousand dollars. And that's not a set in stone thing, but basically, I looked at all the, the bills. And the interest that I'm estimating to accrue before it gets levied. Um, set a little bit of aside, there's maybe some, a little bit more seeding. Stuff that needs to be done in the spring. And so. If the levy was two hundred and five thousand dollars, the numbers in this report are what. Are the, are the levy or the assessments that would be set out, sent out to. The landowners and the lots involved, and this, this map, um. That has the colors and the dollars, that shows, that shows the dollar amounts based on a two hundred and five thousand dollar project.
Will, Eric, when will that be assessed to the land?
In the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, one question.
Yes.
Pre-class.
Yep.
Did the percentages change much?
It, the only thing that changed from the pre-class is that we, there was a small section. Of the city streets that we, I hadn't applied the ponding factor to in the pre-class, that we applied it to. In the reclassification, so the city, the city streets, their percent, their percent of the total went up a little bit more, and it was essentially. That intersection of Main Street and Fourth Street South. Right in there, um, so that did up the city's percentage a little bit. A little bit as compared to the pre-class, but let's see here, I did compare. There, there's, there uh, still six, about sixteen thousand dollars less than the pre-class, um. Estimate that, that they were going to see. So that, that's really the only change when, when I met with the commissioners and we talked through everything, that was the one, that was the one thing that we changed.
Alright.
So was there any written objections?
No, I did not receive any. I don't think Colin did either, so.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay.
That's good.
Any question, comments from any of the landowners?
Okay.
So do we need to close the public hearing first, before we accept it, or how do you want to do it?
Yes, do you want to do that, Bruce?
I'll close the public hearing at, I got nine twenty-three.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, what's the next step then, Colin? On this, is that?
Yes, well, I guess there's one other thing that I just want to. I, I want to point out is that. There is an existing assessment schedule for Branch D of DD eighty. And. This, what, what I'm recommending is that this only be used once. It, it's in the report that way, basically, we just use, we use this assessment schedule to pay for this project. And once the project is paid off, then we go back to, yep, and that includes a larger area. Because we just basically extended the improvement of that Branch D, they went so far and we just went a little bit further. So the people downstream or to the north of that, what we saw in that area aren't included in this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in the future, it's all one tile, so if there's future maintenance.
It'll be spread.
It goes back to that other, that other schedule.
Okay.
So I, I do just want to make that.
And that's your, that's your next item there, which you're referring to, that's. On. Possible action or maybe.
No, that's a different, that's a different thing, yeah. So, but, but otherwise, all it needs is, is to be approved, and then that would be used to new the levy in, in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion to approve. Um. This new schedule for just this project, and then once this project is paid for, it goes back to the old schedule. Am I saying that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we have a first. Oh, second, and a second from Mike. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How long is that? Can't hear you there.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know an exact length on that.
I'm just, I could think the last question, I just. Was looking at it last night and I thought, just.
Yeah, we need to turn. There to about there, if that was six hundred feet. Maybe fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred.
Quite, yeah.
That becomes spread out better.
Yes.
Than the six hundred.
Yeah, if there's stuff that needs to be done in the future, yeah.
Moving on, now we have discussion, possible action on water main or DD eighty branch D.
Yeah, so um, on, on Friday, Brad, Brad called me and. Basically, there's been a lot of discussions, but. That same map that we were looking at, you know, before. Where we, on the north side of the school. Just to get. On First Avenue North, just, just east of here. Um. Where we crossed First Avenue North, there's a water main that we crossed underneath. Um. Brad said that they'd been seeing, and Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this stuff, but basically, at the water plant. You know, they've been noticing that. They're sending out a certain amount of water and then the meter readings aren't matching, so they're, they're missing water, so they've, I've been looking for a leak. And. It's believed that there's a leak right in that area. And so. Different things were looked at on, you know, could it, there's a, there's a hydrant there and um. There's, there's not a lot of visible, it's not like water bubbling.
Well, that big thirty-inch main, it ain't going to come to the top.
Right, and it's, it's, it's tongue in groove, so it wouldn't take tons and tons of water, but really, if you're, like, we talked, if it's ten thousand gallons a day. The amount, that's not a huge flow. You know. In a, in a thirty-inch pipe, so if it, it could, it could get in there and go, and he actually, um, Doyle came up and they looked at it and they. They opened the manhole, um, half block north of there, and there's some water running in there, and he tested it for chlorine. And it did have some chlorine in it. Um. So I guess, and I haven't, obviously been talking to Doyle's and the. I don't know, Brad, do you want to explain how that guy locates those?
So.
Leaks?
I'll just clarify a little bit, so back in, I started noticing water increase. And pumping out to our system in late November, which isn't unusual, because that's. Holiday season start, college kids coming home. We had some issues with our meter reader for a couple days, and so until Angelique and I could get our water loss report done. We couldn't really. Pinpoint if this was on our side, you know, just on a computer issue. Or if it was actually a leak. Uh, once we were able to do the water loss in December, we knew that we were losing roughly three hundred thousand gallons a month. Um. So then I got on the schedule for Iowa Rural Water Association, they have a leak detection team. Uh, that comes out as part of our membership and. They were finally able to get here Friday because of holidays and everybody else. We had a few areas in town that, you know, some additions, some new water main hookups. It's always a good place to start, just because, just because it looks right when we hooked it up. In August doesn't mean that it's good now that the frost hit.
Mm-hmm.
So we did those and then we couldn't find anything, so we decided to do the entire town. He starts by listening to like hydrants and valves. And you can actually hear the water escaping through a pinhole leak. If there's nothing there, it's dead quiet. So once we got close, all of a sudden, okay, we know there's something here. We get up to Fourth, or Fourth Street and First Avenue North. And all of a sudden, you can hear that there's water moving. So then this stuff that he has, he has these, they call them correlators. And they're basically just a electronic magnet that.
Yeah.
They put on a valve. And it'll send a signal in there and it'll actually find the leak and give us the location within a tenth of a foot.
Oh, wow.
So.
How far down is the main?
That one is at five and a half feet, I think.
Correct.
Um, so when we did the, the measurement off the valve, it's literally right on the edge of the ditch. Of. The DD eighty project. So then, of course, once again, we wanted to make sure, is it a valve leaking, so you know, we're trying to figure that out, is it a hydrant? You know, go through the on-off positions of the hydrant to make sure that it did not stop. You know, which we did find another one of those in another part of town, but the hydrant was, it's sealed on that, it's more than likely what it is, and we were able to get that one shut off. None of that worked, so we have it pinpointed. Within about a two-foot range, which is unfortunately right on the edge of this. DD eighty project, um. Obviously, we have a, a one-year warranty starting in, I think it started in August or.
It started when we did the completion hearing, which, well, I don't even.
What?
Remember what timeframe that was, but we're within it.
Seems like it was after school started.
Yeah, it was.
We know for sure, for sure, yeah, we're within that one-year period, I, I don't know when that started, but.
So and this guy that's done the leak detection. So and this guy that's done the leak detection this time. In the last two years since I've been here, this is the tenth leak we found. And the first nine, he has been within two to five feet. So I did, he's extremely accurate with the way in what he is. Obviously, there's always a concern of, is it the drainage district? Was it three fair or is it something that just happened to be close to the repair? So I mean, obviously, we need it fixed because we don't wanna be throwing three hundred thousand gallons of water out there.
Right.
That don't need to be pumped out of the aquifer.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, that's more cost for the city, et cetera.
Right, yeah.
But it can also lead to a bigger leak and the last thing we want is a boil order.
Right.
For the city as well. Um, so basically, it's come to the. Understanding that Doyle is gonna do the excavation and repair. Once we give the, find the leak, you know, and obviously if it's in the. And it's, you know, close radius of what? The DD eighty project was, then it should go under a warranty claim. If, that's my understanding. If it is not, then obviously the city is gonna pick up. That tab because it would be on ours and we need to repair it anyway, so. But that's kind of the place that we had to start. With finding.
What's the cost?
If it's warranty, it's on Doyle.
Right, right. It would, it wouldn't be any cost to the district or to the city.
And if it's not?
Then the city picks it up. So I mean, obviously, you know, Blacktop is shut down for the season. You know, so I mean, unfortunately, we're gonna have a gravel road in the middle of town.
That's where the main is, it's under the road.
Yep. It's right and right off the center of the intersection, so it's a unfortunate position or place. But, you know, it is what it is, you know, that's the downside. When you dig underground and you do underground work. You can't always just go in and look and say, oh, yeah, that's it. Here's your problem. You have to dig it up and. Not the ideal time of year that we wanna be digging up leaking water, but.
No.
Unfortunately, that's when the frost can find a lot of stuff for you.
So are we doing this, Brad, as an emergency repair?
Uh, at this point in time, I need to have it done.
Yesterday.
Faster than sooner than, yeah.
It's around, just getting harder too.
Yes.
And I, I talked to, uh, Doyle's this morning and basically, I, I told him we're gonna talk about it. And I'm gonna call him after this and let him know. And if, if it's basically go ahead and dig, then they're gonna call in an emergency locate.
Um, yeah, because there's.
The good part is, it's, should be. North of the main junction of fiber optic, there is a little bit of fiber optic right there. Uh, obviously our water line, but the new DD eighty tile and the sewer are underneath of this one. And so they should just be able to go down, uh, five and a half feet.
Yes, work on that.
And just work on that section right there and not have to get too far out other than what they need for their trench. You know, to work in that particular area, so.
Are you pretty sure that this was from the? Yes, it makes a lot of sense, but I'm, I mean, Doyle isn't fighting it or anything.
I mean, you know, obviously, you know, anybody that's been in business, you know, if. Somebody comes at you with a claim, you wanna defend yourself.
Right.
Uh.
Yeah, so I'm glad you're having Doyle.
Yes.
Cause they did the work and it's.
Well, I mean, my first call was to Colin, you know, Colin, I was like, okay, he was the engineer of the project. You know, he was in charge of it. I was just kind of, uh, eyes on the ground here.
Yep.
Uh, during the project, you know, and then he was able to get ahold of Doyle, Doyle then contacted me. You know, we went through, you know, you just have to go through systematically of everything. Who's can it be?
Hmm.
You know, and you can build one finger because it very well could be online.
Exactly, until you know.
But yeah, and if you did the right thing, because if there's any chance that it's a warranty claim. You have to, I mean, if you just had somebody else come in there and, and do it and then be like, well, it was Doyle's fault, they need to pay for it. It's a lot.
Yeah, and they're gonna say the other guy did the damage.
And they have to take a challenge, you know, what the other guy's billing and it, it would just be a mess. So it, it's good to. Have them come back, whether it ends up being theirs or not. I know, uh, Chris. Had sent me a couple pictures and I, I went and looked at it, like the, the blue X that they've got marked out is right on the edge of the pavement cut line. So where they, where they cut the pavement to, to do the project. So you can see there's new asphalt versus the old. It's kind of right straddling that line. And Chris took a picture. You know, when they have like the water, water line and stuff exposed. And their trench is off, I mean, they didn't just dig straight down at that cut line. So like you were saying, if it's two to five feet. We don't know if it, cause that trench, it looked like it's probably a few feet over. The edge, the trench, the edge of the trench is a few feet over from that cut line. So we'll just kind of have to see what they end up finding and, and go from there.
The completion, um, hearing was on October seventh. So just so we have the.
Through, yeah.
The date down in the. So it was October seventh, we're the hearing, completion hearing.
So Colin, Doyle would do the, the repair regardless. They're gonna dig it up. Look and see that everything, either it was because of the tile. Or it wasn't, but they will do the repair for the, this project, right?
Correct. Right, and I don't know, like, oh, go ahead, Bruce.
I, I think we just gotta get it done. I mean, right now, we're in favorable weather. We sure don't wanna wait until it gets colder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
I would agree, Bruce.
Right, the only, one thing I'm thinking maybe on the city's side of it is if there's any chance that it's. Not a, a warranty claim, I don't know if you guys want a cost estimate of. The, or.
Yeah.
And he did a good job, like it's not.
Yeah.
Everything he did, because I was so long with him, right? Working with them was good. I think anybody had anything negative working with Doyle.
Yeah, given the situation that when we dug that project, you know, it hadn't rained.
Yeah.
Yeah. And start digging and rain.
He'd go to dig and it rained for two weeks, so, you know, it was, uh. You know, an unfortunate time of the year that this happened.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but it stayed relatively on schedule, given the stuff that we had, so. You know, I'm, like I said, I'm a, when you dig, stuff happens. I mean, it's just, uh, it's just the way it is. You know, and it, we just, like we said, we need to have this fixed.
Yeah.
Regardless, you know, but since Doyle has a vested interest in it.
Mm-hmm.
Then, you know, we're electing to have Doyle do the, the dig and repair. And we've got the clamps and all that stuff, so it is on us. Then we've got the parts.
Yep.
Already available for us to, uh, to make the repair. He just has to get the, the hole open.
So, yeah.
And find out where that leak really is. Is it in the trench or in the trench, et cetera? And then we can make a decision from there.
And get some pictures too.
We will, Bruce.
Thank you.
That was, that was a question that maybe I was gonna have is. I get my concern. I would say normally I wouldn't necessarily need to be involved, but if there's any. I guess I don't know if it's, if there's gonna be a question on, is it a warranty claim or not?
Well, I mean, the day we open it, I mean, it would probably be in, you know, obviously I will be there, Doyle will be there. To have a representative from, you know, the engineering firm, whether it be you or. You know, one of the interns or.
Somebody who's less expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, you have just somebody there. So that way, all sectors of, I'll have my pictures, Doyle will have their pictures, you would have your pictures. You know, from three different angles, three different perspectives. And, you know, obviously, everybody would hope it's gonna be cut and dry one way or the other.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, there could be some times that it's on the line, well.
Yeah, it could be very gray.
Yes.
Area.
You know, is it, you know, the pipe sank because it's in old dirt and new dirt?
Yeah.
You know, is that still considered part of?
Main settlement pull the joint apart?
Correct.
Right, or something like that happened, it would be the project's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. Let's hope it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Cause if it gets gray, that, it gets harder to, to, to figure that out and to prove.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's been too good a project to have it go south now, so let's just dig the hole, figure out where we're at and go there.
Yeah, I agree. Do we have to make a motion on, it says discussion, action.
I think if we're gonna direct Colin to, to be there, I think it needs to be a motion.
Alright, well, I'm gonna make that motion then. On the water main for DD eighty, branch D, that Westerfield Guard. Whether it's you or somebody else, um, Jacob Westerfield Guard, I just always forget Jacobson, I don't know why, but that's alright.
We'll represent.
Will represent us, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thanks, Colin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good to meet you guys.
Yeah, you too.
Alright, um. We're having a work session after this. Uh, if you might wanna stick around, has to do with the Bradgate outlet over there.
Okay.
We're gonna jump right into that work session here in about five minutes.
Okay.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion to leave drainage.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And we are out of drainage yet. Nine forty-five. Okay, I think all we have left now is committee reports.
I had nothing for committee report.
He has nothing either.
I had nothing.
Yeah, just mention that when Trish gets back in here. Oh, you're the lead engineer. I invited Adam to come up for the work session, just so that we can get introduced to people. Was he sitting out there? Alright, we're back in session here, regular session, and we're doing committee reports.
I had none.
Bruce had none.
I have none. I was ready to look at drainage district, getting four B R B. They do so.
And I went, Mike up there and looked at it, and then I also looked at the, the open ditch on DD four. Just west of town, yeah. Okay. Uh, is there anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn?
We have that motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, a work session on drainage, short one, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, yes, please.
Do you have any call or?
Yeah, you can call in, Bruce.
Alright.
Sandy, do you want to take his call because you're in the middle of the table?